Okay, good evening. This is the Coeur d'Alene Planning and Zoning Commission. And this is our November meeting. It's November 12th, 2014. And we're meeting on Wednesday instead of a Tuesday because that was a holiday. Shannon, would you do roll call, please?
Jordan.
Here.
Holby. Ingalls.
Here.
Lutrip.
Here.
Messina.
Here.
Ward.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Cousins.
Okay. Thanks, Shannon. Okay, next, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so I guess next on our agenda is the approval of minutes from the September 9th meeting.
I would move that we approve the minutes from last November, or from last min-- November 12th minutes, please.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion by Ingalls and second by Ward. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so the minutes are approved. Uh, let's see. All right, staff comments. Anything new from staff?
Let me see if I can make this work. So, a couple things. This will be the last time you see me sitting here as the interim planning director. Hillary Anderson, our new planning director, is starting on the 24th of this month. So the next time we get together, I'll be back to just being Attorney Wilson. We also have a new city administrator who is starting next Monday. That's Jim Hammond, former state senator who will be joining us next week. And finally, I mentioned this earlier, we will not be having any hearings in December. We did not get any applications in for December, so we're looking at a meeting first of January is our next meeting.
Warren, would you please push your mic button?
Sure.
Much better than anything.
I still find some comfort that you'll be our attorney still, keeping an eye on us.
You're gonna be stuck with me for a while, I think.
That's good.
Yeah, Lori, nothing new on... Any comments from planning staff?
Um, last week, we held a workshop with Fred Kent from the Project for Public Spaces. And we had a good attendance for that, and I think it was pretty beneficial for trying to create creative, activated, innovative, you know, public spaces. So it was a good turnout that we had from the public, and I think it was a... brought a lot of people's attention to planning.
I guess since you mentioned that, I'll just throw in that, uh... Back many years ago in the early 80s, we got together with those people. And that was when we had our downtown revitalization project done and rebuilt the streets and did things downtown in the late 80s. That was based on their design principles, the Project for Public Spaces, the Main Street USA guidelines. So, it was nice to see them back in town again. Thank you very much. Yes?
If I could, Chairman, a couple kudos. Thanks first. Thanks to the Coeur d'Alene Planning Department for hosting, sponsoring last month. I think it was the 29th of October. I think it may have been the first ever Community Planning Month Open House. And in this room, there were a number of exhibits and experts here. There was the Four Corners Master Plan graphics and so forth that folks could view and comment on. There were a number of recent development projects on display. There was the 2030 information as well and some other things. So I appreciate the effort that went into making that happen, and hopefully that's maybe an annual thing. And second, kudos to you, Warren, for doing the interim job and standing in. Don't quit your day job, and you have your hands full there alone. And to take on that added task is Herculean, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, you take a great job, Warren. Thank you very much. Okay, so now, public comments. Now, this is the time on our agenda. If anyone from the public wants to address the Planning Commission about an item of general nature, if you're here for one of the hearings tonight, then there'll be some time during that hearing to testify regarding that. Okay, seeing none. Uh, we're down to the public hearings now. I think we have three different public hearings tonight. So the first one, the applicant is Gates &amp; Harris LLC. Address is 3890 North Schreiber Way. And this is a proposed food and beverage and off-site consumption and group assembly special use permit in the manufacturing zoning district. This is a quasi-judicial hearing. This is SP-8-14. And I guess you're the one, Lori.
I am. Thank you very much, Commissioner Jordan. The project that you have before you this evening is the special use permit. Gates &amp; Harris is requesting a special use permit to allow food and beverage on and off-site consumption and sales, as well as a group assembly as part of their special use permit. This will complement the existing wine manufacturing that exists on site that is allowed by right in this zoning district. And they would hold open hours as well as occasional events, and that's what this special use permit is looking at this evening. This is an overview of the facility as it exists, and this was part of the approved building permit application back in 2004. This gives a general guideline of the general areas of proposed uses. The teal areas are for their manufacturing facility, and that comp... That's about 5,380 square feet is used for manufacturing, which is a bulk of the facility. And then the remaining 830 square feet would be used for food and beverage sales as well as group assembly. They do have some space outside that could be used for group assembly. And we're kind of specifically looking at the interior because that's what we look at for this facility and this request. And then in reviewing this request, the Planning Commission must make separate findings. And these findings include finding B8A, that the proposal is or is not in conformance with the comprehensive plan. Finding B8B, the design and planning of the site is or is not compatible with the location setting and existing uses on adjacent properties. Finding B8C, the location, design, and size of the proposal are such that the development will or will not be adequately served by the existing streets, public facilities, and services. Staff did a review of these findings to find if it was compliance with these codes. And I'll walk you through a couple of those findings and what staff was able to find. The first finding, that it is or is not in conformance with the comprehensive plan. The Commission may consider that the comp plan identifies this area as stable-established area of the Ramsey-Woodland neighborhood. And currently, the development pattern is mixed, and neighborhood service nodes can be found throughout the area. And this is part of the comprehensive plan for that stable-established. And if we look at Ramsey-Woodland tomorrow, the characteristics of the neighborhood have pretty much been established and should be maintained. The characteristics of these neighborhoods have pedestrian, bicycle trails, parks, neighborhood service nodes where appropriate, and multifamily and single-family housing. And then finding B8B, the design and planning of the site is or is not compatible with the location setting and existing uses on adjacent property. Staff was able to determine that the property has pedestrian connectivity along both Schreiber and Kathleen. And the sidewalks contain a park strip with street trees. There's sufficient parking on site. They've also been able to obtain a parking agreement with a neighboring site if they were to host any group assembly activities. Under the use guidelines for the parking, they meet and exceed what our requirements are for the amount of space that they're using for their facility. The neighboring uses are manufacturing in nature, and there is some residential areas to the southeast of the property. Neighboring uses include multiple beverage distribution sites and manufacturing USPS, some other stores and commercial uses as well. Additionally, there have been other similar special use permits granted in the area. We heard SP-514 recently for Summit Cider, and they were receiving a special use permit for on-off-site beverage consumption. And then SP-612 is Trickster's Brewing Company, and they received a similar special use permit request. This is just a general site photo, and this is from Schreiber facing southeast of the facility. And the site is currently zoned manufacturing, as you can see in the outline of the area. And most of the... And this is consistent with most of the areas along Schreiber. And then that's light manufacturing there, the lighter gray to the north. And the land use is currently as a commercial manufacturing-type facility in the area. And the final finding that the Commission is to review is that the location, design, and size of the proposal are such that the development will or will not be adequately served by existing streets, public facilities, and services. And to determine this, staff requested comments from various cities departments regarding this applicant. And the following comments were received. Water said that there should be sufficient water for the project. Our wastewater department said that they do not have any conditions or comments as part of this request. The engineering department said that this was... The stormwater was already previously addressed at time of the initial development when the permit was granted and then built upon in 2004. Along with the streets, no additions or alterations to the roadway adjoining the subject property would be required as part of this request. The traffic, that was a review of the traffic study. The adjoining roadways can manage the expectant traffic without any special considerations. And the fire department had noted that any review would come at time of building permit. And a building permit for the manufacturing facility was approved in 2004. Staff has no recommended commission... conditions at this time. A mailing notice was sent to 46 properties, and this was mailed on 10/24/2014. And the Planning Commission just must consider this request and make appropriate findings to approve, deny, or deny without prejudice. And you have a copy of your findings worksheet in the attached staff report. And I would entertain any questions that you might have that are specific to this project.
Thank you. Questions?
Just the theory... The idea behind this, I assume, is this is a manufacturing area zoning. And there's lots of noise and dust and so forth that comes up with this. So you get another activity that's in there, a special use essentially notifies the applicant that they're facing circumstances in that manufacturing area that may be different than other areas. And the manufacturing, I think, sort of takes precedence over that. So it's, "Applicant, be aware of what happens in manufacturing areas." Is that... That's sort of my interpretation what this is about, what special use is about for something like this.
Right, and to go along with that, the manufacturing district allows a variety of uses outright. And part of their use is, well, actually a major part of their use, as you saw in the floor plan, is that manufacturing of their wine product. And the special use allows them to do a little bit more of that open hour where they can have people come in to and from their facility. So we're looking at it as far as that special use for the on- and off-site consumption. And the manufacturing part of it is allowed by right, so...
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Any other questions? Okay. I guess we're all set for now. Thank you. All right, so would the applicant come on up? Just step on up to the podium and state your name and address. And then, because this is quasi-judicial, I will need to swear you in. I might mention that the applicant has up to 30 minutes. Not that you have to use it, but you do have that much time if you need it. And then, we'll take public testimony, and the public will have five minutes if they want to testify. And then you'll have some time for rebuttal at the end.
Okay. My name is Kimberly Gates, and my address is 2484 West Sorbonne in Coeur d'Alene.
Okay, and do you swear that the testimony you're giving us will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
So I've been operating Coeur d'Alene Cellars there. I also am one of the owners of the building and land, as well as one of the business owners. And I've been operating there for over 10 years. The business has grown steadily, and I think with the recent introduction of the Trickster's Brewery down the street and Summit Cider, the planning department for the city determined a need for Coeur d'Alene Cellars also to go ahead and obtain a special use permit for food and beverage and group assembly in order to be in compliance with the other neighboring businesses. My business use won't change with this special use permit. I will just simply continue doing the same business that I have been doing. But I'll be in compliance with the other businesses that have come into the area recently. So it follows a comprehensive plan, and happy to answer any questions.
You were the original one there, were you not?
Yes, sir.
Kimber, I have a question for you. There were, I think, 46 mailings, and in my materials, I got two written responses. There may be some other testimony to come. But two written responses, and I don't know if you have those, but I'd like to share the gist of those. You know, one is... I'd say they're mixed. So one is pretty favorable, and they're saying that, you know, you're an excellent neighbor. And they said that, "Excellent neighbor in the past. We anticipate that if this was granted, you'd be an excellent neighbor." The other one is not so complimentary, and they say that during some of these events, you know, there's amplified music pointed up towards Meadow Ranch, and it gets kind of noisy. And they would look for an opportunity to maybe partner with you and, you know, maybe come up to Meadow Ranch during one of the activities and judge for yourself the noise. Maybe the speakers could be turned towards the west or something like that or whatnot. So, you know, one very favorable, one not so favorable. But I ask myself, and I'll ask you and the planners as well, is, you know, really whether that's even germane here to the issue because, you know, they're talking about the activities that are already being allowed, these occasional outdoor activities. So folks are jumping on to provide comments of the activities that are going on there now. So, you know, the activities that are inside in the 830 square feet or whatnot are probably going to be less of an issue than what's going on now. Would you agree with that?
Yeah, I think Lori can speak to it a little bit too, but as a manufacturing zone, I actually, I think I can produce more noise than I do right now. I'm allowed to, at least. I do have some outdoor noise. I have a pressure washer that creates some havoc and a forklift that beeps loudly. And I imagine that that could be disruptive to the neighbors up above. I did present at that planning meeting several years ago with concern that I might not be the best neighbor to them if they were to put that neighborhood in. So, at this point, I'm not sure what to say other than I can empathize with them, and I will continue to just be the best neighbor that I can be. And of course, would consider, if it's disruptive, I could consider changing the direction of speakers or whatever would accommodate.
Thank you. Any other questions? Hey, Warren, as long as we're on this subject, do I recall that where we have residential neighborhoods abutting none... What I want to say, non... Well, not dissimilar uses, such as being next to a manufacturing or commercial district? Have we not started requiring some kind of notification in the title or in the CCNRs on those? Because I know we run across this periodically.
In this instance, Ms. Gates is absolutely correct. This came up at the hearing to approve the Meadow Ranch subdivision.
Right.
There was significant testimony from the owners of the businesses in the park, as well as from our friends at the solid waste facility and from Sid Frederickson, our wastewater superintendent, because we have a facility in that area as well. One of the conditions of approval was that we would insert into the CCNRs for the development essentially a notification, putting potential purchasers on notice that they are moving into an area where there's a significant amount of noise, dust. And I can read that to you a little bit. "The property is located near an existing industrial zone property which currently contains uses including a county solid waste transfer station, a municipal composting facility, a manufacturing park that may produce noise, odor, and/or dust. The residents of the development may find offensive. The owner shall conduct such investigations as the owner deems necessary and/or desirable to determine the suitability to owner of purchasing a building lot in the project. Each purchaser of a building lot or any portion thereof within the property shall acknowledge in writing the aforementioned disclosure." And we even... The next line essentially says that if you're going to lease out the property in your lease documents, you need to require your lessee to sign off on that disclosure. So, in this instance, the city went beyond what we typically would do in trying to make sure that folks that came into this situation were aware that they were coming into an area that was heavily used in surrounding areas by industrial uses, so they could make an informed decision on whether or not that would work for them.
The other one that pops into my mind was, I think, a few years before this, and it was that Heartland subdivision. And I know the State Transportation Department was concerned because it backs up against the State Transportation Department maintenance shops up there on Highway 95. So similar kind of a situation. Okay, so you're right on top of it. Thanks, Warren. Appreciate it. Any other questions, the applicant? Okay, thank you very much. Okay. The next one I have, I think it's Darren. I don't really want to try and pronounce the last name. 3884 Schreiber Way. Pardon me for that, but just go ahead and state your name and address there.
My name's Davin Schostrum, 4102 West Trafford in Coeur d'Alene.
Sorry about that, Davin.
Oh, no problem. It's...
Do you swear the testimony you're about to give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay, go ahead, and you have five minutes. Thank you.
I own Summit Cider, which is directly adjacent to Coeur d'Alene Cellars. We recently applied for and were approved for the special use permit at that address. I'm just here to support Coeur d'Alene Cellars. I think it's very appropriate to the area. I think it enhances the area compared to what is around it. And just here to support this change. It's... She's been operating there for years appropriately, and it's an excellent business, excellent application of that property, so... Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's all I have signed up. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to testify on this hearing? Okay. We have some rebuttal time, but I guess you don't need to use it for anything. So, go ahead. We have some discussion now.
I would make a motion and muddle through the findings if you would like.
Thank you.
Start off on findings in order in support of this with a motion that this matter, having come before the Planning Commission on November 12th, 2014, and there being present a person requesting approval of item SP-8-14, a request for a food and beverage on-off-site consumption and group assembly special use permit in the M Manufacturing zoning district. Applicant is Gates &amp; Harris LLC on a plus or minus 1.134-acre parcel located at 3890 North Schreiber Way in Commerce Park of Coeur d'Alene. Second edition. Findings. I would recommend that the Planning Commission adopt findings B1 through B7 that are in the packet. And B8A, that the proposal is in conformance with the comprehensive plan in relation to objective 1.12, community design. 1.14, efficiency and use of existing infrastructure. And 2.01, the adding of the diversity of mix of quality professional trade and business and service industries. Findings B8B, that the design and planning of the site is compatible with the location setting and existing uses based on it being of a fit that is in the character of the surrounding area and that it is compatible with the land uses in the Schreiber area there and in that neighborhood. And that it is compatible. Finding B8C, the location, design, and size of the proposal are such that the development would be adequately served by existing streets, public facilities, and services based on the fact that all those services are existing, and the staff comments were generally supportive that all of those services, service minimums would be met. So the conclusion would be that the Planning Commission pursuant to the aforementioned finds that the request of Gates &amp; Harris LLC for a special use permit as described in the application should be approved.
Okay, so we have a motion by Ingalls and a second by Lutrip. Any discussion? Okay, Shannon?
Ingalls.
Yes.
Messina?
Yes.
Lutrip?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Okay, so your request is unanimously approved, SP-8-14. All right, next, our second hearing. The applicant is T-Dub &amp; Bubba's LLC. The location is 600 East Best Avenue. This is a proposed warehouse and special use... Warehouse, excuse me, a proposed warehouse storage special use permit in the C17 Commercial District. Quasi-judicial. This is SP-9-14. Guess I should ask if there's any... Anyone has any conflicts to declare or anything? Forgot to do that the first time. All right. Thank you. It looks like we have Sean up next.
All right. Thank you, Chairman. So tonight before you, as you had mentioned, we have SP-914. It's a request for a warehouse/storage special use permit in a C17 zoning district. Location is 600 East Best Avenue. It's 1.49 acres, plus or minus. So this is the location of the property right here. You can see Fourth Street and Best. So just as Lori had mentioned earlier, there are three findings that need to be made for a special use permit. Finding B8A is that the proposal is or is not in conformance with the comprehensive plan. Finding B8B is the design and planning of the site is or is not compatible with the location setting and existing uses on adjacent properties. And finally, B8C, the location, design, and size of the proposal are such that the development will or will not be adequately served by existing streets, public facilities, and services. So first is whether or not it's in conformance with the comprehensive plan. The subject property is located within a stable-established area and inside of the Northeast Prairie District boundary. As you can see right here is the subject property. And it lies within stable-established. Here is the definition of stable-established. Also from the comprehensive plan, there are two portions of it that deal with Northeast Prairie today as well as Northeast Prairie tomorrow. This is the text that can be found speaking about the area today. Not a whole lot of this type of commercial use in general is really located in this area, so you're not going to find a whole lot speaking to the commercial nature of Northeast Prairie.
Thank you.
So here is the Northeast Prairie tomorrow information. And then the characteristics of the neighborhoods as they will be. The only one that really would apply is commercial uses are concentrated in an existing commercial area along arterials with neighborhood services nodes where appropriate. Also, there are significant comprehensive plan policies that I had gone through the plan and pulled out for your pleasure here. You can see objectives 1.11, 1.12, and 1.14. From the first, from the second... From the first, from the second is 2.01, and we have 3.03, 3.05, and then 4.01 and 4.06, and the description of each one of those objectives. So, moving on to finding B8B, is the design and planning of the site compatible? So here is a picture looking at the subject property prior to the switch in ownership, this is when it was Lyles. As you can see, they have a plethora of parking, there is plenty of parking for the area, pretty much the entire site has been asphalted with the structure to the rear there. Here is a site plan showing where the structure is, and you have to pardon, it was pretty light when I received it, working a little bit of magic through, as much magic as you can through word, getting as dark as possible, this is about the best possible result I could come up with. And then zoomed into the floor plan over here and what they are planning to do here, there's a, I think this has changed a little bit since the project review, you may want to ask the applicant whether or not the sales area is going to remain, storage, stock, and shipping area for the remainder of the site. Next is current zoning, so the zoning is currently C17, which you can see right here. Most of the properties in this area are Zone C17, there is an R17 property that's right here, directly to the south across Randall is R12, school located here to the north, we do have some C17, some mixed zones as well as R12, R17. As far as land use goes, very similar as far as the use, most of this area that is owned commercial is being used as commercial, there are, there are some multifamily project next door and a couple of civic, like I said, school and home for the aged, as well as single-family dwellings and some duplex and vacant properties in the area. All right, so finally, we have B8C, which I had discussed earlier, which is handled by department comments. You can see water, there's no issues or concerns, the property currently has, is currently hooked up to utilities. So as far as traffic goes, anticipate approximately seven to eight trips per day during peak hour periods, and the streets will be able to handle the traffic. So once again sewer, it's already there, and the fire department, they gave me their comment here, which is basically saying that they're there to review this at building permit to make sure that road widths and turning radiuses and things like that are met, the minimums. So once again, these are the three findings that need to be met. I can speak a little bit to what the request actually is, so storage and warehousing, it is in your staff report as to what that is. Basically, it's a hub that they're going to use to provide retail parts to the retail NAPAs, so that, as was explained in the project review, is inventory concerns have changed the environment of these type of facilities to where there's no longer, you know, three or four different alternators that you can choose from for a vehicle, there's hundreds, and they can't carry that much inventory on hand, so the idea is to have a warehouse of all of their stuff close by so that they can service their close retail locations, you know, in a quick manner without having to wait for five, six days worth of shipping. All right. So there are some recommended conditions, and this is also in your staff report, they are very general, nothing sticks out to me professionally that's a showstopper. Basically, it is saying that if they change the facilities, that they will be required to treat the runoff with drainage swales. The water department is requiring a reduced pressure backflow assembly to be installed for the structure, and then the fire department is requesting that the FDC be inspected and located in an area that is acceptable to the fire department. There is currently one on site, they just want to be sure that they can get to it in case of an emergency. And with that, legal notice was mailed, I don't believe, I didn't see any responses, and you must consider this request to make appropriate findings to approve, deny, or deny without prejudice, and your worksheet is attached. And with that, that concludes my staff report. Is there any questions?
Sean, kind of related to item number one under those conditions, and it, that one's really to safeguard, you know, stormwater and such, you know, that if the footprint changes and so forth. Help me understand the rule on special use permits, if we approve this tonight, is it bound to the footprint? I mean, the footprint is in the packet, you showed us the footprint, granted, things, as you suggested, might move around inside the building, but if they wanted to add on 50%, double it, you know, make a significant footprint change, not only do they have to abide by the engineering thing, but would they have to come back for a different, a new special use permit?
They would not have...
Does this lock in the footprint?
This does not lock in the footprint unless you guys were to make a condition as such. You can condition it to what they had provided us if that's, if that's what planning commission wants to do. The special use permit itself will apply to the property and stay with the property unless they discontinue the use for two years. They can expand as long as they meet the requirements for parking and all of the other building.
So since there's a lot of parking there, and I would think as a warehouse, it doesn't really need a whole lot of, the requirement would be quite small, they could actually, just through the building permit process, expand that warehouse?
They could, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else? Okay, thank you, Sean. Okay, would the applicant come on up? State your name and address.
Ryan Neary with R&amp;D Architects, 2483 East Mountain Vista.
Eric Wade with Coeur d'Alene Auto Parts for T-Dub &amp; Bubba's, 600 East Best Avenue.
Okay, and do both of you swear that the testimony you're going to give us will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
I do.
Okay. So this special use permit came about based on a building permit submittal that we applied for to basically modify the front of the building and add an overhead sectional door to facilitate deliveries. Upon submittal to the building department and planning department, the planning department determined that we were using more than 50% of the building square footage as a warehouse, which basically kicked this project into a change of use. Our original building permit submittal and the drawings that came out of my office did not intend to have this building be a change of use, we considered it almost exactly the same use as the previous building that was on site, which was Lyles. Lyles occupied the building with a warehouse area in the back and a much larger retail area in the front. We're requesting basically to switch that and have a lot larger portion of the building be used for warehouse, but we still would like to maintain the existing sales occupancy in the front of the building. There still will be walk-in customers that come and park and walk into the store and purchase parts, and we want to be very careful not to lose that. It's, just as a point of clarification, it's not our intent to expand the building at this point. With regards to deliveries, I think NAP Auto Parts has stated that we intend to take deliveries from approximately eight to five on Monday through Friday, there will be a few trucks on a Saturday, hopefully nothing on Sunday, and so the impact to the neighboring residential should be very minimal, if not less than what occurred when Lyles occupied the building. We're taking deliveries in the same location that Lyles took them, at the front of the building through the parking lot, there's no access from Randall in the back, and, you know, it's our intent to clean the property up and make it look a little nicer than it is now, so, anything?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that the Monday through Fridays will be, you know, larger deliveries. Any weekend activity will be just accessing the one or two items that we have to, you know, pull out of there to service our stores locally. There won't be any large amounts of activities. There's days that we don't even receive deliveries, so there will be times where there won't be any activity around there much at all, so, not a lot of extra activity, probably even less activity than there was when it was Lyles Fabric and Gift because they had a lot of retail traffic, a lot of foot traffic in and out of there, and we don't anticipate that. As far as the retail aspect of it, you know, that is what it was designated initially, so, you know, we don't want to change that, but what we intend to do is, as Sean alluded to, is we have products that we just don't have space to put, dry goods, larger items that it doesn't make sense to stock in every single location. One is, you know, financial feasibility and then space, so the location is going to be used for those such items, whether they be radiators or seasonal stuff like, you know, air conditioning compressors for cars, stuff like that, so, not a lot of extra additional traffic to the location, we're just out of space, and we own the property on Fourth and Best, the NAPAs store on Fourth and Best, and we're just bulging, and we just don't have space to put everything in, so, I guess I would just ask that you consider the application.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions, the applicants? Okay. Okay, I guess not. I heard you mention you're going to clean the building up, and, yeah, so maybe that would include some of the stuff in the back that's piled around and...
We have already, we've started some of that, but yeah, there's some stuff in the back corner on, I guess off a boid there, that yeah, absolutely, yeah, I've already spoke with people, and there's some dead vegetation that needs to be cleaned up.
Yeah, but the neighbors would love you back there, that live back there.
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, that's all I have here, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to testify on this hearing? Okay. You probably don't need your rebuttal time either. Would someone like to make a motion on this one?
I'm waiting for the newbies to do it.
Yeah, exactly. I'll go ahead and make a motion.
Okay, great.
And then, much like Commissioner Ingles, I'll do my best to muddle through this.
You'll be fine.
But this matter having come before the planning commission on November 12, 2014, and there being present a person requesting approval of item SP-9-14, a request for warehouse storage special use permit in the C17 zoning district, the applicant T-Dub &amp; Bubba's LLC located on a plus or minus 1.498 acre parcel known as E600 Best Avenue. A motion that the planning commission adopt items B1 through B7 as proposed by staff. Under B8A, the proposal is in conformance with the comprehensive plan. Findings B8B, that the design and planning of the site is compatible with the location setting and existing uses on adjacent properties based on several criteria, item 1.14, that it meets objective 1.14 on efficiency, promoting the efficient use of existing infrastructure thereby reducing impacts to under, or undeveloped areas, as well as objective 2.01, business image and diversity, welcome and support a diverse mix of quality professional trade, business, and service industries while protecting existing use of these types from encroachment by incompatible land uses. And finally, finding B8C, that the location, design, and size of the proposal are such that the development will be adequately served by existing streets, public facilities, and services based on comments made by the various staff and the departments. So the planning commission pursuant to the aforementioned finds that the request of T-Dub &amp; Bubba's special use permit as described in the application should be approved with the special conditions that the engineering, water, and fire departments. Warren, should I go ahead and read those out loud at this time?
You can just reference the staff report conditions.
Okay, yep, so again, thank you, since those were called out during the staff report by Sean, those special condition be applied. Am I missing something here? So, that's my motion.
I think you're doing well.
Second.
We'll see if there's a second, you got a second from Messina? Any discussion? Okay, great. Shanna?
Ingles.
Yes.
Messina?
Yes.
Lutrip?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Okay, so, that's approved unanimously, S-9-14. So you're all set. Next, we have Tammy.
Thank you. So this evening, we have a request for a subdivision, five lot preliminary plat subdivision request for Mill River Fifth Edition. We also have a modification to the existing PUD for Mill River, and we have a zone change for that property as well. So I'll go through all three of them, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them when I'm done. So again, the requested changes for the first two items, which is the Mill River PUD and Mill River subdivision, is propose four additional residential lots in a five lot Mill River preliminary plat, and then as far as the PUD modification, it's to reduce the side and rear yard setbacks for the residential lots. So we'll go through all these findings as Lori and Sean did, and this is the subject property, this is Maplewood to the north, and Mill River Court here, running north and south, and then along here. Subject property is plus or minus 2.993 acre parcel south of Hutter Road, lying between East Maplewood Avenue and West Mill River Court. There is an existing commercial building sitting here on this portion of the site, and the southern portion is vacant at this time, and the red outline is the existing city limits. The applicant for the project is Ruun Jaeger &amp; Associates, and the owner is R-Y-E-I-G-L-L-L-P. So our first finding this evening is that all the general preliminary plat requirements have or have not been met, as attested to by the city engineer, and per Gordon Dobler, city engineer, the preliminary plat submitted contains all the general information required by section 1612.020 of the Municipal Code General Requirements. So this is the Mill River Fifth Edition preliminary plat, this is actually a replat of the Edgewater preliminary plat, or plat. This is Lot 1, currently the commercial building is on this piece of property, and then this will be divided up into four residential lots, and as I mentioned, I'll go through the zone change request, but these would be proposed, our three zoning. Finding B8B, that the provisions for the sidewalks, streets, alleys, right-of-way easements, street lighting, fire protection, planting drainage, pedestrian, and bicycle facilities and utilities are not adequate where applicable. So on pages three through six of your staff report, we do have some department comments. As far as reports from engineering, they reported on traffic and that this project may generate approximately seven total trips during the AMPM peak hours for the residential lots, as far as a... As far as a commercial office building on the larger proposed Lot 1, it's an existing facility and established use, and it would not add to any new trip counts. Streets, the proposed subdivision is bordered by Mill River Court on the west and south sides, Maplewood Avenue along the subject property's northern boundary, and it's under the jurisdiction of the City of Hutter. And it's fully developed. Both streets and existing right-of-way do meet all of the established city standards. As far as water capacity, there is sufficient capacity in public water system to provide domestic irrigation and fire flow to the subject properties. As far as the wastewater department, they did add to the comments that each lot connecting to the public sewer would need to be paying $450 for the Mill River lift station surcharge fee, and they had some additional information in the staff report about connecting up to the sewer main and so on. The fire department had a comment noting that they do need a second access. We did have a pre-application conference with the applicant and did discuss that, and they will be providing a secondary access on the east side of the proposed lots. So as far as finding B-8C, that the proposed preliminary plat do or do not comply with all of the subdivision design standards contained in chapter 1615 and all of the subdivision improvement standards contained in chapter 16.40. Chris Bates with the engineering department reported that the subdivision standards have already been met through the previously approved subdivision. Finding B-8D, that the proposed lots in the preliminary plat meet the requirements of the applicable zoning district. And as I mentioned, that there will be a request for a zone change from the current zoning, which is C-17 PUD, to the R3 zoning district. These lots will meet the minimum lot size of 11,500 as required in the R3 zone, as well as proposed 75 feet of frontage, and that also meets a requirement. The current zoning on the property, as I mentioned, is C-17 PUD, and this is a subject property. The existing building for the commercial use is approximately here, and you'll see in the plat that the lower half is where the proposed residential lots will be. Mill River is currently in this area all zoned R3 PUD, which is what the proposed zoning is. The other portion of Mill River PUD, this is zoned R8. And those are the findings for the preliminary plat, and I'll move on to the findings for the planned unit development. So finding B-8A, the proposal is or is not in conformance with the comprehensive plan. This is the area of the request noted in the stable established area, and it does fall within the Spokane River District boundary. So your staff report talks about the stable established areas noted in this purple area and talks about the character of neighborhood and Spokane River District tomorrow. Finding B-8A, excuse me, finding B-8B, the design and site planning is or is not compatible with existing uses on the adjacent properties. This request is part of and consistent with the Mill River planned unit development. It's a mix of residential, multifamily, and some commercial development. The US Bank Call Center is part of the Mill River PUD, as is some of the copper basin housing projects and condominium projects there. The proposed modification would allow the development of four existing, excuse me, four additional residential lots, and would, the commercial use would remain as is. As far as land use, as I mentioned, this is the subject property. The northern portion will continue to have the commercial use, and then the other uses around the property are residential at this time, with a few vacant lots noted in this area. Finding B-8C, the proposal is or is not compatible with the natural features of the site and adjoining properties. The subject property is currently flat. It'll be graded for pad sites for residential homes. The commercial office building will remain as is. This is a site photo looking north. As you can see, a portion of the commercial building. And this is interior just beyond the existing wall, looking to the west, and as you can see, there's no topographical issues on the site. The location, design, and size of the proposal are such that the development will or will not be adequately served by the existing streets, public facilities, and services. I've gone over those in the preliminary plat, and they are consistent comments that I mentioned. That the proposal does or does not provide adequate private common open space areas as determined by the commission. In the previously approved Mill River PUD, there was approximately 11% of open space that was approved. The Mill River Park, some of the beach area, and there are trails throughout the subdivision that was part of the Mill River open space. This applicant is not intending to change or modify any of the open space that was previously approved. Finding B-8F, off-street parking does or does not provide parking sufficient for the users of the development. There were no requests to modify this parking requirement. The single-family homes require two paved stalls per unit. And finding B-8G, that the proposal does or does not provide for acceptable method for the perpetual maintenance of all the common property. And the common open space, the homeowners association was part of the original approval and final development plan for the Mill River PUD. These homes will also join the existing homeowner association. As far as conditions, we've got recommended condition, as I just mentioned, that these lots will become part of a HOA that's in existence now. As far as water department, domestic services will be required to be installed on the street frontage of lots 2, 3, 4, and 5, and an existing six-inch stub on the south end of the property must be abandoned as no future use will be required for the residential purposes. The fire department has required that second access, as I mentioned in my staff report. That would be on the east side of the proposed preliminary plat, and the applicant has had a discussion and is aware of that requirement by the fire department. And then the wastewater department does have a couple of conditions listed on the additional connection fees, lateral tap connections, and all-weather hard surface access shall be constructed from Maplewood and Hutter intersection to the manhole. And that is all I have as far as the preliminary plat request and the planned unit, or, and the planned unit development. There were 90 notices mailed on October 24, 2014, and we did receive two comments, and I believe that you all have the comments that we've received on that, so.
Okay, thank you, Tammy.
You're welcome.
I got one question. Tammy, I know there's two other parts to this, and one of them is a zone change later for C-17, and I don't know if you mentioned it, but they're going to request it being an R3, so that C-17 is going to go away as far as the whole piece of property with that commercial building on there, if it gets approved?
Actually, the northern portion will remain C-17 PUD. The southern portion of it, or the almost two acres, would be R3. So they're just splitting the zoning.
So the four lots would be R3, and the one other lot north of that would be still C-17?
Yes.
Okay.
Tammy, when I looked at the packet, you know, with respect to the replat, as well as the PUD change, I admit, I looked at the plat, then revised the plat of the new four lots, looking for the open space there. And it's really the whole PUD that we're talking about. Can you show us, though, on one of these graphics where the open space is? It's not in the new four lots, it's in the development as a whole.
Yeah, I don't believe I've got included in any of these photos that. The applicant may have an overall.
We're talking about the whole Mill River, down where the beach area is and the docks and all of that is considered part of the, so the 10% isn't certainly in those four lots.
No.
It's not even in this piece of the development. It's, we're talking, to meet the requirement, they only have to provide the 10%, within the whole.
Correct.
So we have to make that finding, and so that, and then the other, I think you touched on the perpetual maintenance is another finding, and we got an email here from an Amy Larson. I think she's the vice president of the Mill River Property Owners Association that says that these new four lots would fold into that existing.
That's correct. Yeah, they weren't going to form a new one just for those individual lots, they're actually going to join in the existing homeowner association.
That's a condition already.
And let me touch on one other piece of the request, and I talked about it in the very beginning of my presentation. The modification of the PUD, or the amendment for those four lots, the only thing they're asking to do is have a 20-foot setback for the rear yard instead of our standard, which is 25, and a side yard setback on both sides of 5 and 5 versus what our performance standards require, which is 5 and 10.
Tammy, I think what, where Mike was kind of going, and I think it's a good question, if I, I think you were going, was we have some conditions that I think wrap all this up, and it creates, you know, a year from now, two years from now, something to come back to. Is the condition there that those four lots, it's reflected on the plat, it's somehow folded in legality that, you know, four years from now, this, the homeowners association is a required element? Is that captured?
Yes, it is. In the condition for, the proposed condition number one, on page 13, the creation of a homeowner association will be required to ensure the perpetual maintenance of all common open space areas. And the applicant discussed with me prior to the beginning of this meeting that they would join into the existing HOA.
Thank you for pointing that out. I knew I heard you say that, and I was just...
No problem.
Unable to find it, so, thank you.
Any other questions for Tammy? All right. Thank you, Tammy. Okay, with the applicant, come on up. State your name and address like everybody else did.
Daras Ruin. I'm at 3201 Hutter Road in Coeur d'Alene, Idaho.
Okay, and you swear the testimony you were about to give us will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so hope you got it.
I do.
Okay.
Tammy did such a good job, we just have some family photos to show you, and then we'll move on. This is the proposed PUD that we're, subdivision and PUD we're proposing. The next slide, which shows the existing, existing commercial building, as we say, we want to retain that part of it at the C-17. We want to convert the lower part to a four-lot subdivision that would be downzoned to an R3 in the next, next movement. If you look at the eastern side of the proposed development there, there's a ingress egress sewer water maintenance easement that's, exists as part of the original Mill River development. That, that access is the proposed second access that the, that the fire department And if you see the boundary of the plat comes up and makes a jog over and goes on, but the easement continues on, on the, on the adjoining property there. This is the existing commercial building that will remain on the northern part of it. The property to the edge of the asphalt to the south is what would be converted to the residential property. Just looking at it from the other side. And it's, it's very gently sloping towards the, the street that's been developed to the south there. Sorry, the shadows are a lot more inviting than I thought. If you, in the front of this, there's a, is the location of that six-inch stub that the water department asked us to, to abandon, because they thought this was going to be a C-17 piece of property. They did, they did extend a six-inch water main onto the property to provide future water, but that will not be needed for, for this project. The, the street along Mill River Court has already been developed, there's sidewalk and landscaping, so as the staff report said, all the, all those improvements are in. We will be accessing the mains in the street to provide water and sewer connections for the four lots. The commercial building is already on city sewer. This is the access that will be developed for the fire department. This is the, the person who has his eye on this, this lot intends for this to be his driveway, so that'll be an all-weather, all-weather paved driveway. And where that, where that survey truck is located up there is the edge of the development, so we will transition from the end of this onto our, onto our property to provide a secondary access for the people to get out of here in case of an emergency. One of the, one of the conditions imposed on us by the sewer department is to provide a all-weather hard surface access to, to the, to, how do I point to that? The, to the, to the manhole that's, to this, to this manhole. This sewer, all these sewer lines and water lines were put in when the original development. This is, this sewer line has been in there for 10 years, and so the only, only condition we have any, any issue with at all is the, is the need to provide a paved access to that, that manhole. The, the existing material out there is a couple hundred feet of sand and gravel over the rathemalcafe, and, and from an engineering standpoint, I think that, that meets the requirement for a all-weather hard surface access. I don't know if there's clarification we can do here tonight as to whether, in your mind, that means that we need to pave a 60-foot strip to get over to a manhole that's been existing for, for 10 years. That manhole is outside of our subdivision, but, and again, that is the only condition that we have any concern with at all. I do have a, this is the location going to the man, to the, to the manhole. If you, if you notice here, there's gravel that's put here, and the manhole is located in this area. There's another shot from the manhole back, back to the street. It's, all the top sill has been removed, and there's a gravel, it's a gravel material, the napweed's taken over, but, but access is to right there, so. We, we will abide by your decision, but we'd like consideration as to the need to provide a paved surface there. The condition doesn't say paved, it says all-weather hard surface, and I could make an argument to the, with the sewer department that hard surface means a gravel surface that you can access year-round, which I think that exists already and has existed for 10 years. Tammy mentioned that we want to clarify that we do not want to create our own homeowners association, we want to join the existing homeowners association and pay, pay our fees to, to help maintain the open space that exists and, and become part of the, that association rather than create our own, our own entity. That's all I have. Are there any questions for me?
Possibly. Daras, just kind of a standard question I, I like to ask is, is have you, and you touched on one of the conditions relating to the quote "all-weather hard surface access." Assuming that we're left alone, and we'll figure out through the, you know, the development process, it doesn't say paving, it says all-weather hard surface. Assuming that stays the way it's written there, that's condition number seven. Have you acknowledged all of those conditions, 1 through 7, and are you okay with them?
We are, we are okay with, with all the, all the conditions. Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I actually have a quick question. There's also a comment about, we heard a little while ago when Tammy presented, the setbacks would be, you're requesting setback changes from 5 and 10 to 5 and 5 on the side, and from 25 down to 20. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Any, any knowledge from the homeowners association that that's okay as well?
We did not get any response that I know of that... We did not get any response that I know of that they're objecting to that. We've had some conversations with them about our intent there. I think they're looking more for outbuilding-type structures to be in that setback issue. But we have not, as far as I know, we have not received any negative input from the homeowners' association.
Thank you.[622.41][622.41](APPLAUSE).
So are you asking us to allow gravel to be considered the all-weather hard surface?
I think I'm willing to take that on myself as a... It does not say paving, it says all-weather, and I will address that and let it go as recommended, so.
You think you'd keep the weeds bowed down?
Well, it's not our property, it's someone else's property.
Oh, okay. Well, the whole thing is someone else's.
This manhole is not in the subdivision, it's on the property to the adjacent... Can I... How do I go back?
So the entire access is on someone else's property, is that what you're saying?
No, well, the first half of it.
All right.[669.73][669.73](MUTTERING). I've noticed myself, it's really tough taking pictures right now because the sun is so low this time of year, you get a lot of shadows when you're trying to take photos.
This part of it is in the development or in the subdivision boundaries.
Okay.
This all exists, and this is on the adjoining property, this undeveloped property here.
Okay.
And the manhole is located about here, and the pavement is here. And I... Maybe I shouldn't even have brought up the confusion. I will fight my battle with the sewer department on whether I need to pave it or whether I can provide a suitable access with base rocks.
Okay, so anyway, you're content to leave it as it's worded right now?
I am. And I don't know procedurally whether we should clarify condition number one, that we're going to join the homeowners' association. I think a certain interpretation of this is we're going to create, but I think we've discussed that we want to join the existing homeowners' association.
The reason for the condition is to make sure that any common areas that are being created in the subdivision are taken care of. We've seen both of those outcomes. We've had a situation where, you know, there's three or four lots created in an area of a larger subdivision, but they did create their own smaller owners' association. That works for us. Either one is fine. If they're going to join the larger association, I think that's probably best for everyone, and that's going to work. They'll meet the condition.[771.29][771.29](APPLAUSE).
Quickly.
Yes.
Is all-weather hard surface access, is that a defined term? All-weather hard surface?
I don't even know how to answer that. I think not. I think it's really...
Well, maybe is that something we should...
Is it hard surface that you can drive on during the... All year long? The issue that the wastewater department has is they've got fairly large equipment. If they need to get in and clean out that manhole, they need to be able to back their truck up to it. That's really heavy equipment. That's really what they're looking for.
So who makes that determination whether that...
Typically, it's our wastewater department.
Pardon me?
Wastewater.
Okay. So we don't have to address it?
It sounded like the applicant was fine dealing with that with wastewater.
Very good.
Thank you.
Yeah, I've seen a number of situations where this has been taken to be, you know, a gravel with sufficient subbase that you can drive a truck on it in the winter and so forth. So we'll let you work that out with the wastewater department. Okay, any other questions, the applicant, while he's up here? Okay.
Thank you.
I guess you're all done for now. Thanks.[849.12][849.12](APPLAUSE). Okay, I have a number of people. Yes?
May I, for just a second? Maybe in order to save a little bit of time tonight, maybe we can have Tammy do the staff report for the zone change, and then sort of all of the testimony can speak to both of them at one time rather than run through two of them, then rewind and go back through the rest of them again. That might save us a bit of time and get folks home a little bit earlier.[880.00][880.00](APPLAUSE).
Okay, so I'll move on to the zone change piece of this request. As I mentioned, this is a zone change for a portion of the property from C-17 to R3. And this is the subject property. The commercial building sits here, so it's the southern portion of it. This portion for the zone change request is plus or minus 1.247 acre parcel. Again, same owner, R-Y-E-I-G-L-L-P, and Ruin Jaeger and Associates is the applicant. So we'll work our way through these findings again and then let you complete all the worksheets at the same time. So the first finding, B8, that this proposal is or is not in conformance with the comprehensive plan policies. Again, this is the subject property noted here, and this does fall within the Spokane River District, and it is stable, established as noted in the purple area. The characteristics of the Spokane River District are noted in your staff report on pages 2 and 3, and I've also included the comprehensive plan goals and objectives for you to look through. Finding B9, that the public facilities and utilities are not available and adequate for the proposed use. On page 4, there were staff comments, and if you can take note, that stormwater, streets, water, sewer, and fire had no concerns or issues with this proposed zone change. Finding B10, that the physical characteristics of the site do or do not make it suitable for the request at this time. As I mentioned, this subject property will be graded for building pad sites for residential homes, and it is part of the existing Mill River Plan Unit Development. Finding B11, that the proposal would or would not adversely affect the surrounding neighborhood with regard to traffic, neighborhood character, and/or land use. And again, it is part of the Mill River Plan Unit Development. This would only change the lower portion of that larger lot, allowing for residential uses. As far as the land use, this is vacant property for now. These are... The yellow denotes single-family homes are on these lots, and these are a few of them vacant parcels at this time. Existing zoning is C-17 PUD, and the request is for the R3 on this portion of the subject property. Mill River PUD is also currently zoned R3 PUD. And to the north, this is also part of the Mill River PUD, and it's zoned R8. And there were no recommended conditions for this requested zone change. And 90 mailings were sent out on October 24, 2014, and we did receive the two comments that you have. Any questions?
All right. Thank you, Tammy.
You're welcome.
I guess not for now. Right, did you have a question? Okay. You had kind of a question look on your face, so I just wanted to check.
No, I didn't. Thank you.[1088.16][1088.16](MUTTERING).
Okay. Let's see, I have Dallas. I think it's... Is it Dallas and Melissa Dixon? Anyway, Dixon, in favor, don't wish to testify?
Yes.
Okay. And Cheryl Frazier, in favor, don't wish to testify?
I have a question.
Okay. You have to come up here to the podium. Just need to state your name and address.
Cheryl Frazier, 4748 West Mill River Court, Coeur d'Alene.
Okay.
We're the house right adjacent...
One second, ma'am, we have to have you sworn in.
Oh.
Okay. And you swear the testimony you're about to give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so hope you got it.
Okay. Thank you. We're the house right next to the property to the east that they're talking about. And...
Mouse as a pointer if you want. If you wiggle around, a little arrow will come up for you.
That house right there.
Okay.
Yeah.
You want to hold it out there?
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry. Can you make the picture come back that shows the easement? I think that'll help more. My question is with the easement. My husband called and talked to whoever it was at the city with the phone number on the letter that we got. It's a different picture. It's an actual photograph. And...
I'm not sure.
About the easement, and was told that the city would own the easement, that one right there. Probably pretty good. That's our house. And what I was told is that's a 30-foot easement there, and that the city would be dealing with it, not the person developing the property. And so now that I'm listening, I'm thinking that, no, that's not the case. And I don't know if you can tell or not, but that right there and that right there are two posts, and there's a bunch of rocks across here. And the developers that developed this street ended up having to put all of that in there because cars off of Hutter just assume that this is a straight street here. They don't automatically turn right on Maplewood when they cross the railroad tracks there. And they actually go in this parking lot. It looks like a continuation of the street. And then they drive straight through here, and... I've lost this mouse, sorry. They drive straight through here and use this as a sort of driveway thing to go on the street. And so the developers had to actually put this in here to stop all kinds of traffic from just driving through. So if this becomes paved for the fire trucks to get through and attached to that, I'm wondering if this whole thing is all paved, all of a sudden, we won't even have a sidewalk or anything, no safety, anything to keep our house from having all kinds of cars driving through here. I don't know if that's a real question or not, or...
Well, it's a concern you have, and you have a valid concern. I understand that. One thing I can say, the applicant here tonight doesn't want to pave it. He's hoping to leave it gravel, I assume, because he doesn't want to spend the money to pave it and a lot of it's not on his property, which I understand.
But I realize the fire truck problem.
So as far as the traffic going through there, I don't know. Is that something... You got anything input or something for engineering to do something about that?
The applicant may be able to answer that. I believe it was mentioned that they may put a gate up. He might be able to clarify that.
Do I sit down now?
If you're all done.
Yeah, that was my question.
We'll see what he says about it when he comes back up here.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Amy Larson, you're in favor. Did you wish to testify? Okay. And Mary Hess, in favor. Is Mary here? Oh, did you wish to testify? Okay. And Everett Hess, in favor, don't wish to testify? Okay. Is there anyone that I don't have on the list that came in here late and wants to come up and testify? Okay, so why don't you come back on up for your rebuttal? I guess you're still under oath.
Okay. We... The intent is to build a similar wall along... Similar wall to this along this asphalt to provide a barrier, because we get a lot of traffic through our parking lot that we don't want there also. So hopefully, if they see a wall up there, that will slow some of them down. But we would provide a gate that could be unlocked or could be accessed by the fire department or the property owners that need to get out of there. So this would be blocked off, so there would be no traffic or no foot traffic or vehicle traffic through there unless it was an emergency and they needed access to.
Okay, thanks. Is there anything else you want to add while you're up there?
I don't think so.
That it? All right.
I have a quick question.
Hold on a second. Don't go away. Okay, you, then you.
Just a real quick question, just so I can make sure I'm looking at it correctly. This is looking east, and the paved portion on the left side of the picture is the boundary of the C-17 to the left, and the dirt portion would be the proposed R3 to the right.
That's correct. And the R3 would be protected by a wall similar to what you see in the foreground there.
All the way to that fence line in the distance with a gate just shy of it.
There would be a 30-foot gate there to allow the fire department and vehicle access in case of emergency to get out of there.
Thank you.
Daras, my question is related to the gate and the concern the lady mentioned. Would you be comfortable with an eighth condition that just... Not that I don't trust you, but... And I do, but, you know, I like to see these things kind of recorded. An eighth condition that says something that the gate would be provided... A 30-foot gate would be provided with a Knox box?
We would be comfortable with that, yes.
Thank you. I guess that's it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, so does anyone want to take these motions on?
I would give it a shot.
You'll do excellent.
I think we'd try to do all... We do them one by one, I guess, but...
Any shortcut tips, Mr. Attorney?
Speak quickly.
Speak quickly. It's quick commentary, though. I see this as a great thing for the neighborhood. We see the testimony in favor because it takes a big, fat question mark away off the table that says, "What might this be?" And it could be a convenience store, for all we know, and I don't think the neighbors want that. They're nodding their heads, and so I think it just fills in with the character. If there's a little bit of support for deviations and whatnot, setbacks and stuff, I think the neighborhood gets it back many times over in terms of, you know, the question mark going away. And that gets filled in with a character that's going to fit real well. So here we go. We're going to do these one at a time. So the first one would be findings in order pertaining to the modification of the Mill River PUD having come before us tonight on the 12th of November, 2014, pertaining to the plus or minus 2.993 acre parcel south of Hutter Road and lying between East Maplewood Avenue and West Mill River Court. Applicant is R-Y-E-I-G-L-L-P for the said parcel, south of Hutter Road and lying between East Maple and Mill River Court. Propose that we adopt the conditions that are outlined, B1 through B7. B8A, that the proposal is in conformance with the comp plan. That is based on the policies on page 10, 3.05, 3.06 pertaining to protection of the neighborhood character. B8B, the design and planning of the site is compatible with the location setting and existing uses on subject property, and that's based on the fact that this continues a character that's similar to the north side of Mill River Court. B8C, that the proposal is compatible with the natural features of the site and adjoining properties based on the fact that the R3 zoning is less intensive than R17, and it protects the houses to the south, and basically, all of those features there already exist. B8B, the location, design, and size of the proposal are such that the development will be adequately served by existing streets, public facilities, and services based on, basically, the comments in the staff report and the staff comments tonight with the conditions caveated and adopted. B8E, the proposal does provide adequate private common open space based on the testimony tonight and what we see in the staff report. B8F, the off-street parking does provide parking sufficient for users of the development, and that's based on what we see with the graphic, the plat, and we can see that the access to Mill River Court is provided from the lots. B8G, that the proposal does provide for an acceptable method for the perpetual maintenance of all common property based on the email I mentioned from the vice president of the Mill River Property Owners Association, Amy Larson, and therefore, the planning commission pursuant to the... And therefore, the Planning Commission pursuant to the aforementioned finds that the request of R-Y-E-I-G-L-L-L-P for approval of the planned unit development as described in the application should be approved with the special conditions, uh, applied, and I'm not going to read them, they are in the, uh, report that was mentioned, Tammy had on the screen, one through seven, uh, with a small change on the first condition that, uh, they would be joining, adjoining an existing homeowners association, the Mill River, uh, Property Owners Association, and adding an eighth condition that a 30-foot gate would be provided with a Knox box for fire, uh, access.
Okay, um, so we have motion by Ingles. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Messina. I think that was, uh, also wastewater wanted access to that also, as I recall, right?
Yeah, I think that's already covered in the conditions.
So I don't, I don't know whether it's a Knox box or what, what they put on there, but I guess, is your intent is something that's suitable with wastewater and fire for locking?
Right, right.
Any other discussion? Okay, um, Tammy?
Ingles?
Yes.
Messina?
Yes.
Lou Tripp?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
So, so we're rolling along, is that it? Yeah, so we have an approval on, uh, okay, which one was that? Um, is that the PUD?
That was the PUD.
Yeah, so we got the PUD approved.
I would motion that we, uh?
PUD 4-04M point two, excuse me, go ahead, thank you.
Uh, motion, uh, related to that, that we, uh, would, uh, act on the preliminary plat approval for the five lot preliminary plat known as Mill River Fifth Edition, same applicant, same piece of property already referenced. Uh, adopt findings B-1 through B-7. B-8A, uh, adopt the, that finding that the preliminary plat, uh, has been determined by the city engineer, uh, to be, uh, acceptable, meets requirements. B-8B, that the provisions for sidewalks, alleys, rightaways, easements, street lighting, fire protection planting, drainage, pedestrian and bicycle facilities and utilities are adequate, and, uh, that's based on what we, uh, see on the plat and the testimony tonight as well, as we can see that all of those features are basically already installed. B-8C, that the proposed preliminary plat, uh, does comply with all of the subdivision design standards, uh, in chapter 16.5 and all of the subdivision improvement standards contained in, uh, chapter 16.40 requirements, uh, are, have been met, and that is based on basically the exhibits that we have before us, the statements in the testimony. B-8D, that the lots proposed in the preliminary plat do meet the requirements of the applicable zoning district, and that's based on the testimony that we had, uh, in Tammy's presentation, uh, that the 11,500 square foot minimum lot size has been met, the 75-foot frontage has been met, and the density meets the proposed R-3 zoning. Uh, so as a conclusion, uh, the Planning Commission pursuant to the aforementioned would find that the request of R-Y-E-I-G-L-L-L-P for preliminary plat approval as described in the application should be approved, uh, with the special conditions, uh, noted to the, the, the motion that were as described. The, uh, uh, no, I'm going to have to read these, excuse me. Special conditions, uh, applied in the motion are such that, uh, the, uh, adjournment of the existing Mill River, uh, Property Owners Association will be required to ensure for perpetual maintenance of all common open space and that domestic service will be required to be installed on the street frontage for lots two, three, four and five. An existing six inch stub on the south end of the property must be abandoned at the main as no future use will be required for residential purposes and a second access shall be provided and maintained according, according to fire department standards. And each lot connecting to the public sewer will be subject to a $450 and no sense, uh, $450 Mill River Lift Station surcharge fee and that all sewer lateral tap connections to the public sewer main shall be, uh, inspected and approved by the wastewater utility prior to backfilling and that an all-weather hard surface access shall be constructed from Maplewood and Hutter intersection to manhole M-I-L-1-14. That's the motion.
Excellent job, thank you.
Second.
Second by Messina. Any discussion? Okay, Shannon?
Ingles?
Yes.
Messina?
Yes.
Lou Tripp?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Okay. Keep going. So that's, that's approved. Uh, S-5-04 point M preliminary plat. One more to go, huh? There's a lot of Ls in that name, isn't there?
There is. So last motion, I'd make, uh, pertains to the zone change, uh, uh, from C-17 PUD to R-3 residential at three units per acre zoning district, same applicant, same, uh, piece of property mentioned previously. Findings to adopt would be those outlined one through eight. B-9, that the public facilities and utilities are available and adequate for the proposed use, and that's based on, uh, the staff, uh, report, reports in our packet, that there were no objections from the, uh, various staff departments. B-10, that the physical characteristics of the site, uh, makes it suitable for the request at this time, uh, basically that because the, the topography, uh, and such supports it and it's basically a piece of already, uh, infrastructureed, uh, parcels. B-11, that the proposal, uh, would not adversely affect the surrounding neighborhood with regard to traffic, neighborhood character or existing land uses because the testimony of the folks that wrote us as well as those indicating they're in favor of this that are here tonight, uh, suggests that this zone change is a favorable, uh, thing. So in conclusion, the Planning Commission pursuant to the aforementioned finds that the request of R-Y-E-I-G-L-L-L-P for a zone change as described in the application should be approved.
Okay.
Second.
Excellent job again. Thank you. Another second by Messina.
Mm-hmm.
Any discussion on this one? Okay, roll call, Shannon?
Ingles?
Yes.
Messina?
Yes.
Lou Tripp?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Okay. So, thank you for those motions. So that's all approved. All three, uh, proposals were approved. Okay, so, uh, Warren, did we have a, do we have a hearing in January, did I understand? We have an application in?
We won't. Um, no December hearings and the deadline day for January is coming up still.
I guess it's not till, yeah, the last, the end of, okay, in, uh, November. All right. Thanks. Okay, so, um, no December meeting? I guess this is our chance to wish everyone a happy holiday season and see everybody in January and?
Mr. Before, before we adjourn, I'd like to make a couple of comments. First of all, the Veterans Day celebration, McEwen Park yesterday was, was very nice and it was very impressive, the work that they did there. Secondly, today when I was out and about with my wife shopping, there just was a, a feeling of, of gala in the air and I couldn't quite put my finger on it and then it dawned on me, it's the start of Leaf Fest. And I tell you, Cortlande is a pretty neat town and there's not many people, places, they have leaf fest like we have here and it's just, it's enjoyable, especially when you live in an area where you're older than the trees, which I am. And then the third one is just some numbers, a little more serious, and it's 11, 22, 63. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. So, um, we have a motion for adjournment.
Shall we have a motion?
Second.
Second by Lou Tripp, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Forgot to ask for discussion. Okay, so, good for adjourn. Thanks.